Good morning, Hafedee. Hafedee, everyone, and welcome to the Guam Congress Building in Agatna. And thank you all for being here. My name is Senator Duane Sanicless. The Committee on Emergency Response, Border Safety, Military and Veterans Affairs, and the Mayor's Council of Guam is now called to order. The time is 08:58. Today is Monday, November 2023. In compliance with the open government law, notices for this public hearing were published in the Guam Daily Post and on the Government of Guam Public Notice Portal on Monday, November 13, 2023, and Thursday, November 16, 2023. Notices were also by email to all senators and all main media broadcast outlets, and this hearing is being livestreamed on the Guam Legislature's YouTube channel. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of my dear colleagues, Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munya Barnes and Senator Jesse Anderson Lohan. Today, thank you, sir. Today, the committee is holding a public hearing for discussion on Bill 176-37, sponsored by Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Duane T. D. Sanicless, Jesse A. Lohan, Christopher M. Duennas, an act to amend subsection 73151 of Article 1, Chapter 73, Title V, Guam Code Annotated, and to add a new subsection 73121, 127.1, 73104.1, 73104.2, 73104.3, 73104.4 to Article 1 of Chapter 73, Title V, Guam Code Annotated, relative to authorizing the Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency to adopt and implement a customs automated system and harmonized commodity and coding system. If anyone has signed in at the entrance, please join us at the panel if you plan on testifying. At this time, I would like to call upon the author and acknowledge her to give her opening statements. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Manana Sisus, and many of God's blessings to all of my colleagues, to our stakeholders here with us, and of course, to the viewing public. Bill Number 176-37, ladies and gentlemen, represents the culmination of years of efforts from the Guam Customs and Quarantine and its partners, and it is a direct solution to concerns outlined by not one, but two of our elected public auditors over the need to modernize the way our government accounts for imports coming into Guam. I thank the bipartisan coalition of senators who have already supported this bill as co-sponsors, including you, Mr. Chairman, and to Senators Jesse Lohan and Prime Minister Senator Chris Duennas. Ladies and gentlemen, by adopting the harmonized commodity and coding system, a global standard maintained by the World Customs Organization, our island will not only help bring our local law enforcement agency into compliance with more than 200 of its peers, it can also lead to an increase in government revenue without raising taxes. According to the Office of Public Accountability in 2018, while air cargo that came into Guam was valued at 1.6 billion, only about 136,000 in-use taxes were collected. Proper taxation of the air cargo that year could have generated 65.5 million in used tax revenue, which is what the OPA reported. I want to repeat that. Proper taxation of air cargo in just one year could have generated more than 65 million in additional use taxes alone. What's stopping Customs and the rest of GovGuam from realizing that revenue is the antiquated system we use today, where paper manifests are filed by shipping companies? And in order for a customs officer to conduct an investigation into a specific shipment, they will have to search a massive warehouse for one piece of paper contained in one of tens of thousands of boxes lining hundreds of shelves, a task, without exaggeration, that would be like finding a needle in a haystack. It's no wonder our officers find themselves with the odds stacked against them as they charge for preventing crime in a modern age with records maintained under standards that aren't even up to par with extinct empires. As one custom officer put it when they visited my office, "The ancient Romans kept better records than we do today." Mr. Chair, but all of that is set to change through this important piece of legislation. When enacted into law, Customs and Quarantine Agencies will begin its administrative process to develop rules and regulations that will adopt and implement this modern digital system. Thanks to the CQA's commitment to supporting its customers, like the Port Users Group, we have been made aware of a proposed change to the bill to also allow for more time through the Administrative Adjudication Act to develop fines and penalties for violating the harmonized code rather than prescribing fines in law. Mr. Chairman and colleagues, I am grateful that stakeholders are willing to engage with Customs in my office and fully endorse the language that will be shared during the testimony from Customs and Quarantine, especially since it will consider separately accidental violations made by end consumers from willful deception being practiced by bad actors looking to pad their profits with unpaid taxes. Also important to note that, for the public to note, is that this bill does not change the current exceptions provided in Guam law for the use tax, which includes a provision that does not access the use tax on imports that are for personal, non-business use of up to $1,000 per month to a maximum of $5,000 per year. And, Mr. Chair, I'd like to note in closing, I humbly ask my fellow lawmakers to support this measure because it will lead to more reliable data on imported and exported goods that can be assessed in real time, because it will bring more fairness in business by reducing the ability to defraud law enforcement, and because it will lead to more investments into Guam's Customs and Quarantine, because it will arm our officers with accurate and available data to better combat the importation of drugs and the introduction of the invasive species, and because it will bring more revenue into the government without further burdening our people with taxes. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm proud of the progress we can achieve when partnerships are forged and look forward to the day when this fundamental change allows us and policymakers to appropriate more funds into border security, schools, and social services. So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on this measure, 176-37, and I humbly ask again that my colleagues look at this measure and will also note for the record that Guam, in this area, in this specific region and elsewhere, is probably the only island that has not implemented the harmonized commodity and coding system yet. So I'm really hoping that my colleagues will take the time to support the efforts. Undanklen Sisus, mase, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the opportunity to present my legislation to the people and to those here this morning. Sina mase.
Thank you, Madam Vice Speaker. I actually saw that mountain of boxes when I was working there, and I'm very thankful for your efforts to bring to light the many things that we need to do to modernize Customs, and thank you for your efforts. At this time, I'd like to call upon the panel members. I got Chief or Director Ike Paredo, please come forward. Chief Vincent Perez, Matthew Santos, and Captain Jean Rick Mandiola. Thank you, panel. Please, before you begin, introduce yourself and for the record, thank you. Director Paredo, I have you on the list first, sir, so go ahead, sir.
Good morning. My name is Ike Paredo. I'm the Director for the Customs and Quarantine Agency.
Thank you, sir. Just one moment, please. I also have Greg Doyman, please come to the, come up and join the panel. My apologies, sir, I beg your pardon. Go ahead and continue.
We can start. Hafedee, Mr. Chairman, and honorable members of this hearing committee. My name is Ike Paredo, and I am the Director for the Customs and Quarantine Agency. Before I begin my testimony in support of Bill 176-37, I'd like to thank our Legislative Chairman, Senator Duane Sanicless, Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes, Senators Jesse Lohan and Chris Duennas for authoring, introducing, and sponsoring this bill. Since the congressional delegation of Customs duties to the Government of Guam in 1950, the manner, procedures, practices, and processes in exercising Customs formalities on goods, cargo, commodities, travelers, and conveyances has remained unchanged. With Guam and the other U.S. Pacific territories aside, the territory of the U.S., the individual territorial government was given authority to administer their own customs affairs. For the Government of Guam, Customs and Quarantine Agency is responsible to execute these functions at all of Guam's port of entries and enforce all applicable federal and local statutes as required. In exercising these functions, CQA is the cornerstone facilitating trade and commerce, assessing and collecting applicable taxes, identifying, regulating, and mitigating admissible as well as inadmissible goods, interdicting, intercepting, and seizing illicit contraband, investigating and dismantling criminal activities occurring at our borders. However, these practices, process, procedures, and legal authorities to fully execute our mandates have remained unchanged and grossly antiquated for more than 70 years. In the seven decades since the creation of CQA, globalization of trade and commerce has increased exponentially, with Guam and our economy benefiting with the rapid growth. While Guam's processes remain stagnant, the other customs administrations from around the world determine that their customs practices of the past needed to modernize in order to keep pace with globalization, while minimizing impact to legitimate trade transactions and maintaining an optimum degree of border management to secure their economies, resources, and citizens. Realizing that the increased volume in global trade exceeded their capacities and abilities to efficiently assess risks and threats, monitor and collect revenue, account, and control goods and commerce, collect statistical information, and perform other fundamental duties, organic to customs jurisdiction, the need for uniformity, transparency, predictability, and simplification became a principle for modernizing with changing environment. This common goal was memorialized through the adoption of the international treaties and conventions proffered by the World Customs Organization, which revolutionized trade procedures and customs practices, which were then left to be ratified by countries who acceded with disagreements. Two particular standards have been the foundation of modernization: the Revised Coding Convention, or RKC, and the Harmonized Code Description and Coding System, or HS. The RKC has become the blueprint for modern and efficient customs procedures in the 21st, which simplified the harmonized customs procedures, while the HS is the multipurpose international product nomenclature for the identification of commodities traded. These internationally recognized standards have been adopted by more than 200 countries to include the United States and in our region, Micronesian countries such as Republic of Palau and the Kiribati, to name a few. Although Guam recognizes as an important regional distribution hub, our import volumes exceed of those of these two Micronesian countries combined, customs procedures remain unchanged since the '50s. Today, CQA relies on non-automated and heavily paper-intensive document submission processes for entry determination for imports and exports that requires customs actions. This practice is exhaustive, as CQA officers review volumes of paper to conduct assessment for risk and trade assessments, identify contraband, determine products subject to regulatory procedures and permits, collect and assess use tax, and other mandates under our responsibility. Current procedures are not capable of carrying out real-time and pre-arrival, interfacing with technology which can perform detailed analysis and assessment of goods, interface with other systems to account for commodities, develop reports or keep records, or allow improvement of entry services. Overall, Guam's clearance procedures are decades behind the rest of the world, and the countries in the Pacific compounding our enforcement and regulatory capabilities. However, Bill 176-37, if enacted, is one critical piece of legislation essential for CQA, the Government of Guam, and the importing and exporting community. Bill 176 would align ourselves with the rest of the world, modernizing based on the RKC and the HS international standards. That would increase our enforcement and regulatory capabilities, integrate technology, capture statistical information, and improve CQA services to benefit, to the benefit of our stakeholders and the public. Bill 176-37 will both our current border management programs with best practices used by other global and regional customs administration. Without this legislation and other subsequent measures, the ability to modernize and incorporate automation into our current customs border management initiatives and processes, the cumbersome manual, non-automated, and susceptible practices will persist. From a customs enforcement and regulatory perspective, these current conditions are no longer adequate, are inefficient and ineffective, especially as cargo volumes and demands for required customs services increase at Guam's borders or ports of entry. Modernizing and automation was intended by this bill will provide CQA with the ability to become efficient and effective with our entry processes and maximizing resources. The opportunities that the intent of the bill will provide will not only benefit CQA and the trading community, but have broad benefits of other government of Guam agencies, the public, and investors seeking opportunities on Guam. In combination with HS and automation, a standardized submission nomenclature will be achieved, and that will collect real-time statistical information to develop economic and GDP reports on the importing and export activity of our island. Currently, all entry documents such as bills of laying, invoices, manifests, and other documents, part of the entry process, are filed with more than 5,000 boxes stored at our warehouse. The volume of statistical information is currently digitized or itemized in any electronic platform for accessibility to evaluate, compile, and complete reports. In our current state of collection, to carry out such tasks would require personnel to examine, filter, manually capture such data. Due to high volume, this can only be accomplished by reallocating personnel away from their normal duties of inspecting and interdicting. Since no current automated methods exist when CQA is subpoenaed or Freedom of Information Acts are received, it requires the mobilization of officers away from their daily duties in order to comply in a manner, in a timely manner. In recent years, requests have been made for imports and exports of tobacco, alcohol, and use tax assessment. In order to comply to this request, the agency would reallocate an average of 16 uniform personnel to complete and compile the requests. The time to compile the information, on average, took three to four weeks to identify, examine, review, extract the information from the file boxes. Bill 176 alleviates this problem of the non-automated statistical information by allowing the use of the HS and automation for the collection of trade information and non-documentary trade data interchange in connection of such modernizing procedures, reducing costs and availing the government with digital statistical information stored within a real-time platform. CQA has long awaited this opportunity, substantial modernization efforts in the customs clearance processes. In 2020, in collaboration with the help of Guam Bureau on Statistics and Plans, a grand proposal to address Guam's trade data needs challenges with revenue collection on imports and inefficiencies associated with manual customs clearance. And pre-arrival clearance was developed. BSP worked with CQA to develop the final narrative for the project funding cycle. The combined efforts resulted in a technical assistance project ran from the U.S. Department of Interior. In 2021, the award was used by BSP to acquire the services of the Oceana Customs Organization to carry out works on the Guam Customs and Import Operations Modernization Project. The MOU with OCO required consultants to establish the appropriate legal framework for the introduction of the harmonized system, assess CQA's current processes, procedures, policies, and organizational structure measured against RKC standards for customs administrations globally, assess and recommend if CQA's infrastructure and desire can support the HS implementation, identify the appropriate capacity building for Guam Customs on HS training, and lastly, conduct HS training and other relevant training related to introduction of HS. If Bill 176-37 is passed, CQA through the administrative adjudication process intends to adapt the 2022 harmonized schedule specific to Guam's unique customs requirements, will improve how information is shared, accessed, and used to inform budget, policy, resource allocation, regulation, and analysis. After meeting with stakeholders from the logistics industry on the ways to improve upon the bill to ensure its intent and objective, carried out the following recommendations was developed. CQA recommends the current language contained in Section 3, from the beginning at line 16 of Page 4, subsection 73127.1. Penalty: Incorrect entry, A to E, be struck and replaced with the following language: 73127.1: Authority to establish fines and fees. The director is authorized to establish and amend fines and fees in accordance with the administrative adjudication laws pertaining to this act. The rules and regulations shall include the provisions that: A. Allow CQA to deny entry or re-export cargo and goods that have been incorrectly declared under the harmonized commodity coding system; B. Prescribe tiered fines based on the cumulative number of offenses made by the responsible party; C. Consider separate administrative actions for consumers who rely on third parties to import goods into Guam and importers who engage in personal deception when declaring goods being brought into Guam under the harmonized commodity encoding system; D. Require fines or penalties collected or paid due to being found guilty of violation outlined in these rules and regulations shall be deposited in the Customs Fees and Fines Penalties Revolving Fund created under 73153 of this article; and lastly, address other pertinent administrative provisions necessary to carry out the harmonized commodity encoding system. This will authorize CQA through the administrative adjudication rules and regulations to develop criteria, specific definitions, processes, procedures, remedies, and other language for uniform, transparent, and predictable fines and fees for violations of the entry submission. In closing, as CQA moves toward a fully integrated customs management information system that handles every step in the customs process, the implementation of the harmonized system is an essential part of this process. I look forward to your support of the bill and the recommendation offered, and I am available for questions from the committee. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Director. Chief Perez?
Hafedee, and good morning, everyone. Good morning. My name is Vincent Essen Perez. I'm the Chief of Customs. And before I begin my testimony, I'd like to say thank you to Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, Chairman Sanicless, Honorable Senator Lohan, and Honorable Senator Duennas for proffering the Bill 176-37. So this morning, my testimony is in support of Bill Number 176-37. This bill, if enacted into law, will exponentially increase the government of Guam's effectiveness in facilitating and efficiently collecting real-time data on all merchandise entering Guam. This replaces the current antiquated and cumbersome process in which all unsorted data is manually collected, stored in boxes until the data is able to be manually and time-consumingly extrapolated, reviewed, and compiled. Through the use of technology and the implementation of the harmonized coding system as a standard coding, it will bring Guam into compliance with worldwide standards as what was previously testified by my director. It will serve as a catalyst in which data can be much more effectively collected, sorted, and maintained for all stakeholders. This bill would help set the stage and build capacity by enabling the Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency to develop rules and regulations, develop an automated management information system, and finally, create a universally standardized, efficient, systematic, and concise commodity coding system, which provides much more detailed data points which can be utilized by government stakeholders, regulators, investors, and the public. This would enhance the government's ability in which clearances, application/collection of revenue, tax, and exemptions are much more effectively applied and tracked. As a result of implementing this bill, it would create a much more efficient environment which provides consistency through universal classification codes. Automated systems using universal harmonized codes ensure that appropriate taxes are effectively applied, reducing the chances of inconsistent or incorrect classifications, speed and efficiency. This allows for quicker processing of imported merchandise, commodities, and shipments, reducing delays and associated costs. Real-time updates, computerized systems can be connected to the databases that provide real-time updates on tariff rates, trade agreements, and regulations, improve record-keeping, enhance record management, compliance tracking, and risk analysis/mitigation, and other regulatory enforcement actions. Globally, as was stated earlier, over 200 countries and territories worldwide use the harmonized system, including the United States, to facilitate international trade and ensure consistent trade and ensure consistency in the classification of goods. Guam will finally be able to acquire the real-time data necessary to make well-informed decisions when dealing with business, investment opportunities, governmental regulations, finances, and greatly assist with providing accurate and real-time data efficiently and effectively. Thank you. This concludes my testimony. I'm available for your questions.
Thank you, Chief Paris. Sir, John Rick?
Hafaday, and good morning, members of the committee. My name is John Rick Mendiola. I'm a captain with the Customs and Quarantine Agency. First, I would like to thank Vice Speaker Tuna Munia Barnes, our chairman, Duennis Siniklis, and Senator Jesse Lohan for introducing this bill that is very important to move and modernize the Customs and Quarantine Agency in our current in our current position. I am here to provide, to offer my support for this bill as well as to answer any questions the committee may have as testimony is provided during this hearing. Again, thank you for your support, and I'm here for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain Mendiola. Next up, we have Matthew Santos.
I'm Matthew Santos. I'm the deputy director at the BSP, and I'm here to testify in support of Bill one seventy-six. Actually, I have a presentation to kind of help articulate our support and also provide the bigger picture of where the harmonized system comes into play and, you know, how we envision it to be implied. Let's go to the next slide. So this this harmonized bill is actually a long time coming. This all started in two thousand and twenty, you know, in collaboration with the Office of Insular Affairs. And the conversation actually started because, you know, we had we had limited trade data, which is actually used for a number of things. I mean, from budget planning to calculating our GDP, and then obviously for, and then also, we talked about the lack of use of data in customs clearances. I mean, it's really not used. So one of the unique things about this was that we worked with the federal government in collaboration with CQA to kind of define the overall roadmap for this project. And this is from end to end. We discussed what, you know, what were some of our challenges that, you know, in reality of actually seeing this thing through fruition? And the biggest one was going to be having a system, being able to fund it. So we defined, we actually defined in collaboration with the federal government, the full funding cycle from end to end. The project that we're currently in is under its first funding cycle through the Department of Interior Insular Affairs. In two thousand and twenty-one, we were approved that that first funding funding cycle, which is funding our project now with all of the experts that are working with CQA over at the OCO. And one of the big accomplishments we made in two thousand and twenty-one, which was a major hurdle for CQA in past years, was being able to work with OMTAD, which is a component of the United Nations. By getting the federal government to give us what's called a no objection through the Geneva, you know, for the UN in Geneva, through our U.S. representative, we were able to now, one, be able to accept the technical assistance from the OMTAD as a, you know, somewhat sovereign state, and we were also able to use ASI Cuda, which is the most commonly used custom system in the world. USAES, which is the U.S. system for automated customs enforcement, wasn't an option for us, you know, based off our organic relationship with the U.S. and also for the fact that we don't have a broker model. It also would increase our cost to operate. So coming into now, you know, we've done the diagnostic, they've done the customs diagnostic, and they're working on the reform plan, and now we're at the state of where we're requiring legislation to be able to move to that next step, which would be implementation. So if you want to go to the next slide? So the harmonized system in automation, well, the harmonized system in initial will improve how information is shared, accessed, and used in several ways to inform budget, policy, resource allocation, regulation, and analysis. So the, you know, you know, from revenue functioning to economic, budget, border security, and other, a lot of this has already been articulated by CQA's testimony before. Want to go to the next slide? So this provides a visual representation of, you know, how it would be applied. We essentially use harmonized codes to map in, you know, what what applies, what processes applies, what limits apply, what tax needs to be assessed. So on the customs, you know, on the regulatory side, which hasn't really been elaborated on, you know, we have agriculture, EPA, and public health, and they all have their own individual customs clearances that apply to the commodities that they oversee coming in. So one of the things that are the goal for this project is what's called the custom single window, where we use harmonized codes to essentially define the workflow, the process, and then whatever forms and fees that are associated with them. This is, this would greatly increase the efficiency of both customs, but also, you know, you know, improve our ability to regulate and then, you know, close whatever, you know, tax leakage gaps that we have. And the big one for us is going to be the trade statistics. This will actually eliminate our need to actually to data enter individual invoices that are attached with each customs form for, and, you know, this will be a big thing. And if you want to go to the next slide? To show this, these are the components of our GDP. So a lot of people wonder why it takes forever for our GDP reports to come out. A lot of that has to do with the the delay in trade data. So not only are we not able to like do things like budget for, you know, properly for use tax or really understand like what we should be collecting, it does apply to how we measure our economy. So, you know, it improves our estimates of household consumption in durable and non-durable goods, serves as a primary source for estimating construction and equipment for business investment, serves as a primary source of information for calculating net exports, and this is the one that's really that causes the delay. Critical indicator for validating government investment and would allow CPI to be estimated as a fifth component of our GDP. Next slide? So ASI Cuda, this is the one that we, you know, since we got that no, the no objection from the U.S. State Department, we'd be able to get ASI Cuda, which is really the goal. So, you know, without this, I don't think we have as much progress because there's, in reality, we could attain automation and not have to worry about the financial commitment that would be needed otherwise. So it's free to Guam, it's web-based, sorry. CQA would have full ownership of it. You know, we'd be able to, you know, benefit from whatever updates and enhancements that it would be able to include, but, and this system uses harmonized codes to do everything, from workflow to forms, to clearances, to, yeah, to penalties. So pre-arrival, manifests, economic statistics, transit shed declarations, accounting, and so forth. Want to move into our last slide? Or our next slide? So, you know, as CQA was talking about earlier, we're kind of like behind the ball in terms of having an automated customs support system. So you could see on the table on the left side of the slide, that's basically an account of who has a harmonized system in place and automation. And on the right, the map with the listing shows all the countries that are currently using ASI Cuda. Next slide? So this is where we're at. This is how much work's kind of gone into this project so far, mostly on this, you know, or primarily on the side of CQA and OCO. So we're all the way into the point of where we're, you know, the implementation of the harmonized system. I'm not going to go through each one, but, or each step, but it's imperative at this point, you know, for before we move forward to have something in place. Otherwise, there's too many assumptions to what the final outcome is going to be. So the expected results are going to be inventory of custom-related measures that will allow, you know, CQA to align with the WTO and RKF and other international agreements, form action plan with specific activities in a sequence manner that to fill the gaps and to effectively implement, the effective implementation of HS updated version compatible with the WCO HS Convention at the local level as well. And yeah, this is really going to allow us to move into our next part. So this this harmonization implementation is going to be the last step before we can engage federal government again for more money that's kind of been pre-committed. So, and once we get there, then we can engage the UN for the system and to also provide technical services for the implementation. So this has all been really thoroughly thought through. We made sure that we had funding or mechanism to have a system that's sustainable, and this is the path that we're going down. And that's pretty much the the content of my presentation. Hopefully, that provides you guys the bigger picture and some context to why this is so important.
Thank you, sir. Sir, Mr. Gregg, thank you.
Hi. My name is Greg Dornan. I'm the general manager with DHL. I've been with them thirty-five years. Before that, I was in management with United Parcel Service. So customs has been speaking to us and some of the forwarders, and we really support the HS code. It's it's everywhere, and it will reduce a lot of paperwork, but we did have some concerns, and I noticed that customs struck that language from the original bill. So I'll go over the concerns that I have. I've been part of exporting hundreds of thousands of shipments to every country in the world, and there has never been a penalty or a fine for an HS code that's incorrect because the HS code at the destination belongs to the shipper, not the destination. So I think Guam has to be careful when they look at penalizing the HS code because the shipper puts that on there, and we transported to destination. Now, I have had shipments held in Russia because it was signed in black ink and they required blue ink. We've had shipments held in the Philippines because customs said, hey, you've, this paperwork is not correct. We don't believe the value of this shipment. And then we have to go back to the shipper and say, customs has held this, give us a correct commercial invoice and correct HS code. So really, that's how it's in the United States, does the same thing. We've never had a shipment penalized for an incorrect HS code. We've had them held, we've had the U.S. deny entry and said, this is incorrect. But the penalty doesn't really affect the constantly because they're an innocent receiver of that shipment. So I think we have to be careful there. So if you implement this way, it's worded, if grandma sends cookies from the U.S. and the HS code is wrong, the constantly could get fined, and there's thousands of HS codes. So typically, this is business to business, and they limit it to that. I'll sit a little closer. So I just think we need to be careful when you talk about the penalties for incorrect HS codes. They're great for modernizing and, you know, maybe you could submit, we have to print all the paperwork every day, but it'd be great if we could just email customs the manifest with the HS codes. But not every item has an HS code. So there, the way the the bill was written, it's like everything has an HS code, they don't, and some have multiple HS codes. You know, like what kind of phone it is? Does it have a phone case? Is it this or that? So I think we need to really think that through. And then there's the equal application of the law, which both FedEx and UPS and DHL many times have to apply the Tenth Amendment and the Commerce Clause and say, hey, you're really putting a undue burden on us that we can't meet this standard. So the HS code is great, but if you penalize shippers, like Amazon could send out three hundred shipments in one day with the wrong HS code, that is really Amazon to fix. Guam Customs can say, hey, you've got to get back to Amazon and get the correct code, but they shouldn't be penalizing the constantly here who ordered sunglasses, and maybe Amazon put the wrong code on it. That's up to fixing that. So look, I think the solution for customs is to offer preclearance when you meet the criteria of the HS code. Let's say you're at ninety percent or ninety-five percent. Customs might go, we agree with this, you're now at ninety-five percent, we'll offer you preclearance. The penalty should be probably held shipments or delayed clearance when it's not correct, but not a monetary penalty. It's going to be easy for DHL. I mean, we can overnight, we could put in a restriction on Guam that said if the HS code is enlisted, we won't accept your pickup, but not everybody can do that. Not all the small shippers can do that. And then you will affect your commerce because some people will say, we're just not going to ship with you. We're just going to go mail. What is an HS code? You can imagine that, how difficult that could be. So there needs to be a transition into it. They mentioned Palau, and January first, Palau implemented the HS code. Palau went from our very best clearance location to our worst. They are the most difficult place to clear cargo right now. The State Department had to go down there and stop them from doing some of the things they were doing with U.S. military cargo. And that's because Palau struggled with the implementation. And and done properly, it's a great system because all of your doc, you can actually electronically see everything. But done improperly, you can really make it a burden on people and to ship product in and out. So look, if customs has a penalty that they need to enforce, they should do that today. They should say, look, if people are giving us false documentation and we need the legislature to give us the ability to penalty that, that should be done with or without an HS code. That's something maybe they need if people are smuggling cargo or doing something like that. I talked to UPS and a lot of the other forces. We all want the HS code. We all think it's a great idea. How to implement that and the penalties for that, I think they really need to be thought through. It really should be like a carrot. Do this properly, FedEx, UPS, everybody, and your cargo will clear. Do it incorrectly, we're going to be slowing your cargo down because you're making it hard on us. We got to send an officer out there manually check your stuff. So those are my thoughts on that. And by the way, customs did meet with us a couple of times to get our thoughts in advance, and that's why I think they struck that language. But I just think the legislature needs to be careful and really considering what penalties for getting the wrong HS code. I think it's much better to encourage people. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Dornan. Is that correct, Mr. Dornan? Thank you for your testimony. I want you to expand on the nightmare with the cookies from mom.
Yeah, so if your grandma sent something to, the way the bill is written, if she were to send cookies, she does have to put the HS code on there. She's going to have to look that up and figure out what HS code that is. And the way the bill was originally written, if it got here incorrectly, the constantly would owe, could owe five thousand dollars fine for putting the wrong HS code on there. I don't think anybody means that, but you do have to apply the law. If that's how the law is written, then you have to equally apply that law and say grandma or Amazon has to meet this law of getting the HS code correct.
Thank you, sir. And also the nightmare that's happening in Palau, could you expand on that a little bit more?
Yeah, so, well, when they implemented it, they really didn't tell anybody it was doing it. On January first, it got implemented. So we had sent some cargo down there for the U.S. military, and there is a SOFA agreement, so there's no taxation, but the customs had no ability to do that. And so they taxed it, and the U.S. military paid it a few times, and then the State Department got involved. Then they had like charitable stuff from Japan that was sent down there, and because the HS code said it was chairs, and the customs didn't have the ability to say, but this is free, this is a gift. They taxed it, and it got held for a long time there until they could figure out how to say, well, we didn't mean to tax this, this was a free gift from Japan. So those chairs got held down there to this. Now, today, if you send something down there, and you don't have an original commercial invoice, they make you stop that shipment, go back to the shipper and get an original commercial invoice. That's really hurts your commerce when so many of your shipments are being held. And then, so what you want, I think, is a slower implementation where you encourage people, say, hey, for six months, we're going to let you do this, but they did it on January first. And then they just, like it was a one hundred percent, it's going to be implemented as of today. So it took a couple of months to get them to recognize the SOFA agreement down there and let the U.S. military cargo go regardless of the HS code, be tax and duty free. But then it just took people a long time, so their shipments have been delayed. So Marshall Islands has the HS code, and they're pretty good. We send it to them in advance to their customs, and they tell us, hey, we want this to have a correct HS code, or this will be this tax, and we know before it ever gets there what the situation is. That'd be great if we could do that with U.S. with Guam Customs, if they would say, hey, we see your manifest, correct this before it gets here, and we'll fix it.
Thank you, sir. Chief Paredo, is there, you know, I would like you to maybe explain to us how the benefits of this this particular bill for the general public, for the customer, the consumer. Could you expand on that, or anybody from the from the panel with customs?
Okay, so I have the project manager here that that handles this program. Explain the benefits of the.
Oh, that's a, that's a good, good question, Senator. How does it benefit the end user ultimately, right? I think it 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 will help give a simplified process, a uniform process, to everyone on how goods will be entered into Guam. I do understand that the at the initial step, it will be difficult, it will be hard, but we do have a plan where everyone will eventually embrace the use of the HS and the process that is much needed with the use of the HS in part of the entry entry, the entry process. Our plan, if this bill is passed, is to add for time as well as extend training to the our personnel, HS training on how the officers will apply and how to how to execute the use of the HS. the use of the HS in line with an automated system such as the Asakuta World, but also train stakeholders, because ultimately, their stakeholders, the traders, the couriers, they're the ones who reach out to their, their constituents or to their customers, so that we're going to have time so that they can, they have, they have an understanding of how and the manner which information needs to be, need to be, needs to be submitted. Obviously, we don't want to hit everybody up with penalties right away. We do understand, and you know, with our meetings with, with the industry, we understand that there's going to be, I guess, tough learning as we go. And we don't want to come down with an iron fist and tell them that this is how we're going to do it. We do believe that training, public education about how entry process will be, will be accepted by Customs is the goal, so that everybody benefits from the use of, use of the HS code when submission, when submitting Customs entry, entry documents. They may have more information about their products of what they're ordering from the various suppliers worldwide, not only in the US, but also across Asia, the Middle East, Africa, the European Union and elsewhere. So I think that will give them a better understanding also of the products that they're purchasing with, with the HS. They actually will have an idea that they're not being sent, when they're ordering a phone, they're not ordering, and, and when you, when it comes in, they only get a phone cover, then they'll understand, the HS code that I requested for, or in line with the product, which is the phone, is different, and you know, you, I ordered a phone and not a phone cover. So that's the way I see it. But, but definitely, you know, we do have a plan to, to train, to, for the public awareness, so that everybody understands how the process of entry will, will be submitted at the, the given time when we, we need to fully launch the, the implementation of HS, along with whatever automation platform that we do have out there.
Thank you. Thank you, Captain.
Yeah, I could add to that, too. So you know, part of this project, this last phase, under the implementation of the harmonized system, one of them is to design and produce appropriate policy and procedural guidelines for the use at a national level based and respective country requirements. So, you know, a lot of these nuances, we'd kind of be able to assess. And then also make recommendations of any classification matters to include, you know, classifying of local trading commodities, especially primary produce, or any other commodities for inclusion in the HS version. So maybe these, these use case scenarios that, you know, that our general manager from DHL was alluding to was, we could, you know, we have opportunity to kind of address those things to sure that, you know, the execution kind of accounts for, you know, all these, these instances where, you know, and then also assess the rate at which they occur. So.
Thank you. Just wanted to also ask, because of the modernization with, with this harmonized system, is it possible, or will you be able to do preclearances?
That is part of the goal of reform and modernization, implementation of the HS and acquisition of automated system, is to pursue preclearance. We want to, if you look at it, and Senator, you've been there, we want, Customs wants to be open all the time. So we know that trade is always moving, and just because our doors are locked, it doesn't mean that the entry process should stop, because goods are moving across the ocean, through the sky, coming into Guam. This gives us a perfect position to implement a preclearance, preclearance program, which I believe the couriers, the forwarders, and ultimately, the customers will actually appreciate. They know that when they make a purchase, they can start the entry process, start so that goods can be moved to their hands quicker.
Thank you. Thank you, Captain. I just, yes, go ahead.
Yes, Senator, let me, let me just provide more information on that. The preclearance is a prerequisite as part of the HS system, because by doing that, we get automation and HS together. We cannot just implement the HS without the, the modernization. So when we automate our procedures and our practices, then it goes together with HS. We can, at that particular time, start preclearance. By the time the vessel leaves Japan, in two hours, we'll be able to do preclearance even before that vessel lands in Guam with this particular system.
Thank you, sir. That was what I was trying to get to. I really love the, you know, the, the system, and I think it's very important. My main goal is to improve the services, government services for not only the, not only the, the government itself, but also for the private sector and the end consumer. I've, I've been in both ends of this, this procedure as a Customs Officer, and always wanting to improve services for our customers, and also as a businessman, and, and the, the need to move products from one end to the other and get it to the consumer as quickly as possible. That's, that's my goal, and I, and it's nice to hear that, that, you know, that we are working on that to improve services, not only for the government, but also for the, for the consumer. I have some other, I have Paige Butler, and also Catherine Castro from the Guam Chamber. Could you please come forward? Just one moment, one moment, sir. Please don't leave the panel, because we still have questions for, from the, from the other side. Ma'am, come on up, please. We have Mr. Butler, you're first. Go ahead and your name for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the senators coming in today and their busy schedule, seeing everybody. My name is Paige Butler. I'm the general manager for DGX Dependable Global Express. We've been servicing Guam for over 35 years. I just want to come in and inform you folks a little bit more about what's involved on our side, because we are the people that are at the Customs Office clearing documents day in, day out. And I wanted to let you know how this harmonized coding system will be affecting us on the clearance side. I brought some invoices, this is real time, for things that are coming to Guam, and this are how invoices are presented to us for clearance at Customs when the product arrives. On here, there's nothing to show a harmonized coding system, I mean, a harmonized HTS number. The shippers don't have that available all the time. So my question is, who enters that information into this system? If we don't have an HTS code available from the shipper, where do we get it? And then who's going to enter it into their system? That's one question I have for this new implementation. Another thing I'd like to point out is, you know, that was a simple one. That was one customer with all these items. Then we have like a container load of invoices. This is what we present to Customs for clearance. We give them a manifest showing, you know, who the shipper is, who the continent is, what the commodity is, the pieces, the weight, the size, value. We give them a copy of our freight bill. It shows the exact same information. Then we give them an invoice, showing them what's going to be cleared. The invoices don't have harmonized coding system, and these invoices come from the suppliers and vendors, shippers, that send the product to Guam, who our businesses in Guam are buying from. Not very many businesses that we buy from in the US are set up to ship internationally, which already have these HTS codes in their system to supply at any given time or when we need it. And we're going to need these as soon as the ship's out. So where do we get these codes from? Who's going to enter into this system? If we implement this system, and we have businesses on Guam that buy from shippers, suppliers, vendors, that are like mom and pop type of operations, that are just, you know, family-owned businesses, that don't have this information or the ability to get the harmonized code system, how do they get it? And where would the, our customers here in Guam start buying from if they can't buy from these people they've been buying from for years? They're going to have to find someone else that can, you know, apply the system, because there's some people, I don't know if you ever bought something off of eBay, Amazon, it says, will not ship to the Proctored States. The reason for that is they don't want to deal with having to go into the USPS system to try and enter the information. Not because they don't have a harmonized code system, but because they're too lazy to do it. Now, we go to another business and say, you know, hey, in order for you to do business with Guam now, you're going to have to start supplying with these HTS codes. And they may not want to do it. So now where's the customer going to go to buy their product from? So that's kind of my primary concern with the system. I appreciate that we're trying to find an easier way to clear down there, something that makes it a little bit faster and easier for all of us. You know, going electronic does seem the way to go, because, you know, we do have a lot of paperwork to go through each time. To me, the clearance process down there is not that timely. I mean, sure, I can send a person down there, and they'll spend three or four hours to clear it, but, you know, once you get the containers up, then we still got to unload all these containers and deliver it. On our side, you know, we're able to get this done before the weekend. The vessel arrives on Tuesday, by Friday, everything's done, which includes the Customs clearance. So there's no large delays on delivering. I mean, probably my biggest delay in getting everything out more timely is just the lack of having, you know, 25 trucks to deliver everything in one hour after it's available, because I'm not, everybody wants their stuff right now, but that's my biggest limitation, you know, is that, you know, the equipment and just the sheer cost of being able to deliver it in an hour. So my question to Customs is, you know, who's going to take care of all the HTS codes? Who's going to enter it? Where do we get it from?
Thank you, sir. Anybody would like to answer that question?
Yes, I can, I can, I can possibly answer Mr. Butler's question there. Of course, you know, we, we've consulted with OCO, and one of the things that they, they advise us, and the best practices used around the world. I know the, the, the current bill does not talk about a brokerage system here on, here on Guam, use of a brokerage system. So we understand that. But however, we do have, if this bill is passed, and we get the rules and regulations, and we get the program running, and we do the training for everyone, we will have a portal and where importers, shippers can have access to the unique HS codes on Guam, so that they can look for the correct codes, so that they can submit their entry documentation along with the invoices. I know that this is not new, this is, this is how global trade works, and I, we are open, and we want to work with the industry, with the traders, with the couriers, on improving upon the way we're going to carry the, these, the implementation of HS and automation out. So that's what we have planned. Once we move forward, once HS is approved and, and automation is pursued, is to provide a public access portal, where the information on the unique HS codes for Guam will be readily available for shippers, importers, couriers, the general public. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain.
I didn't hear the question answered on who's entering it.
I beg your pardon, sir.
I didn't hear the answer to the question of who will be responsible for entering it into the system.
Oh, okay.
All those, all those that will, that are, are involved, when we identify who will be responsible for, for importing the info, inputting the information into the Customs entry documents, will be the one responsible. Either we can have it where the shipper or the importer.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Captain.
So the challenge to that, okay, here's, you said to have a shipper being the seller.
Sir, please direct the question to me.
I'm sorry?
Direct the questions to me.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
The, the question is, is, you know, who would enter it into the system? So in this case, he said it would be the shippers, the suppliers, the continent. So how are they going to get that information to know what container it's arriving in? What's the freight bill number going to be? Because that would be on our side. So ultimately, it's going to be on us as the freight companies that have to enter this information.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Madam Vice Speaker, go ahead. I recognize you.
I was just noting through the process, Mr. Chair, that, that when this legislation becomes law and the process is worked on, based on the recommendations and the amendments that we put on, there will be an opportunity for the experts to be deployed to Guam based on the, the partnerships that are being done, and I know that there would be funding for that. So whether it be the resident expert that would be deployed to Guam and, and the Asakuta, that program, that partnership will be inclusive. And maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, then the, the IT infrastructure and all that will be put to place, but Guam won't be doing it itself. It would be based on the universal process that is already, has its successes in everywhere in the United States and around the world, especially inclusive of our Pacific Island nations that already have that program in place. And I know that there may be glitches or concerns or issues that come on hand, but as the program progresses, when it progresses, then changes can be made accordingly. Am I correct with that, John Rick, or Mr. Director? Both?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, right?
I mean, we are not going to work on this by ourselves. You know, we, we'll be working with consultants. We will be working with the industry here, so that we can, you know, we can iron these things out and take in their recommendations.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, I, I do know that Mrs. Castro was also here, so maybe what I could do is if, sir, allow her to speak, and then I, I had some questions also for the panel, and we can start from there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice Speaker. Ms. Castro, could you please continue?
Good morning. My name is Catherine Castro, and I'm with the Guam Chamber of Commerce, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here today to provide our comments on this important proposal that will dramatically change the operations of our Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency and impact our island's importation and export of goods. Guam Chamber recognizes the value of implementing the harmonized commodity and coding system, which is utilized globally to streamline trade and promote world economies. Additionally, the system would enable our government to collect data, allowing the system to track and monitor the flow of goods in and out of Guam. Obviously, with such a system in place, this valuable data collection would help our island make informed economic decisions regarding trade and investment. The Guam Chamber has a longstanding working relationship with the Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency, and we have advocated for the modernization of the agency's practices, most especially in the clearance of cargo and the timeliness involved in the process. The implementation of the harmonized system at this time of economic hardship and uncertainty, uncertainty, however, makes it extremely difficult for the Chamber to support as we consider the challenges local businesses are facing at this time. In speaking with Guam Customs officials, I was made to understand that the implementation and automation process would take anywhere between 18 and 24 months to fully implement, as this would be a time of transition for the agency as well. Additionally, there would be an opportunity within the same period for the agency to train and onboard our local companies on the use and expectations of this proposal, if this proposal should be mandated into law. For the record, the Chamber would like to convey its concerns for the business community as follows. The costs of implementation would require a significant investment of time and resources for the private sector and any resident who orders products online to understand and work the new system. Implementing the harmonized system would require Guam's business community to learn and comply with new coding requirements, potentially increasing administrative costs and adding complexity to trade procedures, which could disproportionately affect small and medium-sized entities. There will be a potential for disruption in the flow of importation of goods for an extended period as businesses and the agency adapt to the new system. This may be cause for concern for the general public if products will not be readily available on shelves or as expected, as expected in normal shipping conditions. There may, there are many small specialty shops, village grocery stores, and the like, that would be greatly that would be greatly impacted should this bill become law and may find this system difficult, cumbersome and expansive. The penalty fees as outlined in the current bill are exorbitant and should be reconsidered. Do other jurisdictions implement these fees? And if so, what is the fee scale? Who is responsible for information that is incorrectly inputted? The shipper, the forwarder, or the constantly, or the customer? There may also be considerations for private online purchases, the government of Guam and for the federal government regarding compliance to the new system. Additionally, I request for the private sector to meet with Guam Customs, especially the smaller specialty shops, mom and pop stores in a round table setting to share concerns and issues, that there is more community involvement and opportunities from both sides to understand the implications that this new system would have on the entire community. And additionally, we request for a penalty free period of two years after implementation of the harmonized code to support the community's endeavors to be compliant with the new system should this proposal be passed into law. We appreciate this opportunity to provide our comments and look forward to further discussions with the authors of the bill and Guam Customs and Quarantine. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ca, Mrs. Castro. I'm going to go ahead and recognize the Vice Chair, Madam.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'd like to first thank everybody for being here and sharing their input. I know that every time a bill is introduced, it might not always get its favorable consideration, but maybe questions and inquiries to that. Mr. Chair, before I ask my questions and, and give some statements, I'd like to note that both the Guam Port Authority and the Guam International Authority, the A.B. Guam Patent International Airport have submitted written testimony. And I want to make sure that they get appended to the, to the committee report, sir. So they both sent in Senator, former Senator Rory Ruspichu gave favorable testimony and support. And also former Senator John M. Canata, executive manager for the A.B. Guam Pat Airport have submitted testimony and support. So Senator Ruspichu for the Port Authority of Guam and Senator John Canata for the Airport Authority. In the efforts, Mr. Chair, in this process moving forward, I want to share that this didn't just happen overnight. I want you to know that in two previous legislatures, we had been working on this process. I think this is our third or fourth year since 2020, even before that, right, Matt? This, this, this body, and I really appreciate the presentation that was presented by, by you, the executive branch. But more importantly, we had legislation come into play previously. And because of, of wanting to move the issues and concerns that are, some of them brought up today, we wanted to make sure that we, we, we looked at that. I also want to note that in the efforts of hearing some of the concerns, it was noted that in the beginning in my testimony, for those who came late, that we would be looking at amending this legislation to include the AAA process. The, the AAA process is the adjudicate, the adjudication process that the government of Guam does. So to the industry stakeholders who are not familiar with the AAA process for Guam, there is a, a, a month, if not years, long process for a back and forth between agency and stakeholders. And if customs or B, BSP want to expound on that, feel free so that our industry partners can better understand that this is not a one and done process. And I, I, I want to make sure that the people, the industry partners know that the AAA process our government of Guam uses is something that, that continues to work with having the public hearing processes and all that. And Mr. Chair, before they answer that question, I will also note that the Coast Guard, who has worked very close with the legislature and the government of Guam as it relates to manifest and, and ticking and watching over our borders, they too have submitted testimony in support of this effort. I will note for the record, Mr. Chair, that again, Guam is the only jurisdiction that has not complied with this harmonized code system while everybody else in the Pacific region and growing and also nationally and road wide have implemented this program. So on the AAA process, customs, if you'd like, and, and BSP, you're more than welcome to share your thought on the AAA process. I'm sorry.
I, yeah, and I think that even if you get to that point, you know, the, we're not even, so when I say implementation, that there's a lot of planning and policy that's actually involved in that. So say before OMTAD comes in, they're going to be looking at process review where the end users, the shippers are going to be looked at as the major stakeholders to help define things. So whether it comes to piloting a, a wireframe to make sure that it's practical, assessing any third party integration from, you know, major online retailers or marketplace facilitators. We, we obviously don't want to do something that's counterintuitive to the public because that's, if, you know, on our list of priorities, it's not, oh, we have tax leakage. We want to be able to, you know, you know, provide the greater good. I mean, obviously, it's not going to be perfect. But I want to articulate the fact that we're far away from this thing be, becoming a reality. And there's a lot more planning and there's a lot more private sector and public involvement that's going to be involved before we even get there. So until we have a system that's been accepted by the users, there's nothing to really put into place. So we have no intention of leaving anybody behind or, I mean, obviously, it's not going to be perfect for everybody, but we're going to try and hear everybody out. And that, and that's not just like our motivation, that's part of the process that's kind of been predefined and is part of the lifecycle, at least from the OMTAD side, that we'd be coming in once we get past this phase.
I, I think just to add on to, to Matt's comments, there is, you know, with our little exercise with the OCO, with the, with the work they've, they've done now, they, they did have, they did want to speak with stakeholders, those using custom services to get their fill. And if this, if this bill is passed and we, we do begin the AAA process, we'll continue that. I think we're going to add that into the development of our rules and regulations. It's keeping it confined to the experts, reaching out to the stakeholders so that we can build proper rules and regulation that addresses everyone's concern, customs concern, the stakeholders concern, and coming out with, with rules and regulations and procedures that we can all accept and, and move forward with to increase the movement of goods and commerce while maintaining the optimum level customs needs to ensure that goods and services are passing through the border and that we identify all those listed goods. So the AAA process is, is, it's going to be a, it's a, it's a wonderful thing because it adds to the conversation and building of the rules and, rules and regulations necessary to carry out the intent of, of the legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. And I, I want to share, Mr. Chair, that just earlier, I got to speak to a couple of constituents who, who work in the industry. And they too had concerns about the process and, and sharing that the amendment will be a part of the amended portion of the legislation. It gives an opportunity for the industry stakeholders to be a part of the process when we do the AAA process moving forward. But, Mr. Chair, I also want to note for the record that the Bureau of Budget and Management Research, BBMR, has submitted a fiscal note. So it's attached to this legislation for the record. And also that the Bureau was unable to determine an estimated cost impact for possible, for possible revenue collections at this time absent additional information from customs pending the introduction of the CHCC code schedule. It should be noted that media reports state that the subject legislation has the potential to raise an addition, additional $50 million in revenues for the government of Guam without raising taxes. So this fiscal note has already been submitted for the record. And I just wanted to note it for the, the viewing audience also that is, is listening in. I don't have any more questions at this time, Mr. Chair, but thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you, Madam Vice Speaker. Senator, you're, you're still there?
Yeah.
Yeah. Senator, Senator Lohan, please.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, thank you also panel for being here this morning. And likewise, as the Vice Chair for not only aviation, but also maritime, you know, we always seek to, again, to modernize how things are, not just cargo, but even passenger services is modernized. We know the great challenges that, that we have. And likewise, as been mentioned by folks from customs as well as the shippers and, as well, that this is going to be, it'd be a challenge, but it would be, but it's something that we have to cohesively work with to be able to get this in place. Again, we have some antiquated systems that are in place right now. For example, I'm just working closely with, with Hawaii in the, in the, in the situation that, that we face over there, our passengers face over there that have to get off. And I just received, again, a, a letter from their federal senator over there that, again, CBP Hawaii and Guam are working with Transportation Security Administration, Department of Agriculture and State of Hawaii Department of Agriculture Partners to identify solutions to an aviation security perspective to modernize and recheck baggage noted above. And this is, again, when we travel from Guam to points beyond and we go through Hawaii, we know the hardship and the, and just the brutality that our, our passengers have to go through over there. But we're outside the customs zone, but we're working to be able to have a situation where we can, again, pre-clear here where everybody, we're CBP, TSA. It's, again, something in, in compliance to the federal regulations. And, you know, prior to this letter, basically, they, they send me a letter with a, with a middle finger attached to it, basically saying that you guys are considered a foreign country. I said, oh, really? Okay, so let's get, let's get past that, right? And so, again, we understand, again, from the, the shippers as well, the hardships. But again, in, in concert with having to implement new systems, that everyone will be brought together prior to implementation and, and understanding with this. Because this doesn't just affect, again, just the, you know, the implementation of these cargoes and all that, but also being outside the customs zone, the U.S. customs zone is, is, is a great, well, it's a disadvantage to us and it's used whenever it favors them as opposed to us. So, but, but thank you again this morning for, for being here and, and voicing your concerns and, and supporting concerns for, for this particular bill. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, thank you, Senator Lohan. I'd like to recognize the presence of Senator Canata. Sir, you, you have any questions for the panel?
Good morning, no questions. Apologize for being late. I wasn't able to attend your testimonies and, you know, hear all your points of interest. But certainly, I will review this and work with my colleagues to see what we can do to move, move this legislation forward. Again, thank you guys for all being here today.
Thank you. Any more sentiments from the panel? Done? Okay. As a former customs officer, I know the importance of modernization. It's very important and very critical. It's, 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 it's nice that the, the, the people who are in charge are going to actually give this, this system to us. We just need to provide the hardware. And it's very important, very critical that we modernize. At the same token, I'm very, I'm very concerned about how this will impact our, not only our shippers, but our forwarders and all the, all the other folks that are involved in the movement of goods, trying to apply my school counseling experience to this. But we're going to, we're going to do our best. I, I also saw recommendations from the Chamber of Commerce for two-year cease, or ceasing of, relaxation of, of fines while it takes, it takes time to implement the, this, this new program. So there is a compromise here. It's very important, the public needs to know that customs needs to modernize. We really need to modernize. That's coming from, from what I, from what I've experienced as a customs officer. I think modernization is good for the community, it's good for the consumer, and it will, it will help, I guess, facilitate trade and hopefully bring to, to realization of pre-clearances. When I was a customs officer, I've, I, I noticed that we don't clear containers until the ship actually lands, which is such a nightmare for, for us because it, it fills the lines of, of the office when that happens. And I think, like the director had, had mentioned, that the moment the ship leaves, it's, it's, it's a port of origin. Two hours later, we'll be able to go ahead and pre-clear. And that, that is a tremendous gain for the public if you're looking at it from a business perspective, from an end consumer perspective. That's a wonderful thing. And to get us there, I think we need to modernize. And this is very important. At the same token, I wouldn't want to do anything that would burden our consumers and our shippers. So there's a compromise in here. And I think as we move forward and it gets through the floor, I think the necessary amendments and inputs will be made so that way the, the, the passage and the implementation of, of this bill is workable for everyone. I'd like to thank all of you for, for joining us. Chief, Director, Mr. Butler, Mr. and BSB, and Madam. Thank you all for providing that testimony, your, your testimony. And, and the industry partners in the backs and the audience, everybody. Happy Thanksgiving. Please take care of yourselves and each other. And with that being said, I'd like to thank everyone for attending this hearing. If there is no more testimony here today, we will adjourn this portion of the public hearing. And it is 10:23. Please note that all, also continue to receive testimony via mailroom at the Guam Legislature or through email at senatorsaniklis@guamlegislature.org. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good day.